Are we being recorded yet? Or we decide? I'm sorry. Oh, we have five more minutes.
Yeah.
Sorry, since we started early last time.
No, we were trying. Sorry. I didn't know you were going to ask that. Welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you for your willingness to consider serving on the Lynchburg City School Board. I think to introduce you to who we are up here, I think I'll start at that end. Councilmember Farrell, and we'll just tell you who we are.
Chris Farrell, and I represent Ward Four.
I'm Sterling Wilder, Ward Two.
Welcome. I'm Bo Wright. I'm at large.
Mary Jane Dolan, Ward One. This is Jeff Hoggson, who's left the room for a minute.
Thank you, Dr. Trenae Tweedy, at large.
At large.
Randy Nelson, at large.
Yes, I do need to tell you there, or would like to tell you that this is being recorded so that the public can have access to these interviews in the future. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Got that. So I'll start down at this end. We have some questions for you, and Councilmember Nelson is going to start off with his.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. Now, first of all, I want to thank you for your initiative to make the application and your willingness to serve on the school board and for being here today. For many years, the Lynchburg City School Board regularly approves Lynchburg City School Administration's proposed budgets and policies without making any material questioning of those proposals. If you were a member of the LCS School Board, what would you do to hold the administration professionally accountable to ensure that LCS steadfastly delivers the promises and policies included in its mission statement, "Every Child by Name and by Need to Graduation"?
Well, Councilman Nelson, I truly believe in order to do that, we have to make sure we are following the policies that have been made and continue to govern the board and allow the board to govern their superintendent to make sure she's following the rules and regulations set forth by the board and the council. I also believe that as we go through all of that, working with her to make sure that she's able to do her job effectively and then also make sure that the staff and the students are getting the services that they need as they continue to mature.
And in that respect, I'm talking about the whole administration, not just the superintendent. But if there was a proposal that came to the school board and you sensed that you had some reason to question it, would you be able and would you have the fortitude to ask the questions and ensure that the recommendations are those with which you can be comfortable and not just approve it simply because there are others who would be in favor of doing that?
Yes, sir. I believe that I have the fortitude to be able to make the necessary judgments and say, hey, yes, I agree, or no, I do not. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Tweedy?
Thank you. What is your engagement in the communities and neighborhoods that Lynchburg City Schools serve?
Well, I also sit on the Board of Churches for Urban Ministry, which is an organization of 25 churches and businesses that support the community and the students in the areas. We have a food, a growing gift garden that we feed our neighbors and our students in. We also have a food truck ministry that we work with, the Red Food Truck Ministry that we work with. We partner with the Lynchburg City School Systems to work where we did pre-COVID as a mentorship program in the R.S. Payne Schools. So doing that and also work with one community, one voice, and different entities in the community.
And if I could follow up with that question, so we know that poverty is an issue in Lynchburg City Schools. How would you advocate to address the needs of students and get the results, the outcomes needed from the school division by those students and families?
Well, I totally agree that we need to make sure our students are well-fed and have the medical capacity. We do know that some parents are not able to afford the, or have the means to afford the food that is necessary. So making, trying to make sure that we have. I appreciate the schools giving food during the summer programs that you all do and making sure that the students have the meals that they need in order to be successful throughout the school day. So my goal would be able to continue that and continue to support that to make sure that we will make sure our students are fed and that they have the medical capacity to come to school invigorated to make a good, have a good success that day of school.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Hoggson?
Just, I guess, yesterday, it's been on the news about the report regarding Virginia and the learning loss that has transpired. Some of the report is pretty terrible for public schools. And when you look at the fact of how poorly eighth graders are reading or proficient to be able to read or mathematics and whatnot, we have those same issues in Lynchburg where we have one of our elementary schools got a 9% passing in SOLs. Lots of issues that are going to come forward if we would do those tests again because the last couple of years, there's been a whole lot of less education that has been going on out, to put it mildly, because it's been remote or, you know, and a six-year-old, hard to learn phonics when you've got masks and things on. What do you think we can do about that learning loss moving forward?
Well, I know our church, church, excuse me, worked with Palmer Royal Elementary School. And one thing I know the principal, Bear, did was contact me and asked us to utilize our building to have her teachers come over and read to the students in that community to engage the parents more. I believe if we were to engage the community a little bit more, have more reading programs, and then be able to, that will help our students with the brain drain that they have gotten. Again, especially since COVID has taken place, I understand that it's harder for the students to learn due to all the different things that are going on.
And with that, a lot of it had been, you know, to me, I look at it as somewhat self-inflicted. I look at the fact of the schools closed, or they required masks, or they required all sorts of things that other school divisions didn't. Other school systems, whether it be private or homeschool, and lots of these parents have said, I want my children to learn. I want the mission of Lynchburg that says every child by name and by need to graduation to actually apply. And so they took their kids out of the school system, or they had to pay their extra money elsewhere to send them elsewhere. You know, with that, I look at that, what would you have done differently if you were on the school board a year or so ago when they were debating these issues?
Well, I truly believe that our students need to be in school, but also understand the health scare that everybody was going through with COVID as was going about. I believe if I had the opportunity to be on the school board, that I would encourage the schools to stay open and to continue to meet the needs of the students, to make sure that they are receiving, understanding their mathematics and their academia, as well as being able to, be able to go home and encourage the parents too, to reach out to the parents and say, hey, can you please make sure your student is available for this, that, and the other? I just believe that in order for us to be effective and see success as a student, it takes a village to raise a child. So I believe that's all of our responsibilities.
Thank you.
Okay, so what do you think is the biggest challenge facing our school district?
Hmm. Probably one of the biggest challenges that we face as a school district is retention, making sure we have good staff to teach our students, as well as the appropriate buildings and the facilities are up to par, and making sure that we are meeting the needs of our students. There are some of our students, as Councilman Heggson said, that are falling behind and figuring out a way how we can come together and make sure those students, we do know that all students, everybody learns differently. Some are more hands-on, some are, can repeat things verbatim just by hearing. But we also got to meet the needs of those students who suffer and who cannot do that without having a hands-on experience. So I think we need to be more hands-on to do that in our, in our school divisions.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I just want to follow up on what the mayor just talked about, I'm sorry, actually, what you just talked about in response to a question, which was retention of qualified staff, not just teachers, of course, but maintenance folks.
Correct.
You know, custodial staff, nutrition folks, and just across the board, we have a lot of turnover, and including, of course, in administration. As a board member, how would you approach really digging into those questions and then do you have ideas about what LCS could be doing differently than what they're currently, they're currently doing?
Vice Mayor, I really believe I would need all, all the documentation and research to understand everything. I do believe that, like you state, like, well, like I previously stated, that we need to be able to retain our, the staff and making sure that they have the pay. Some of retention deals with pay, and I also realize that pay is not always the main motivator of every person. Most of us or most persons I know have jobs that they go to because they love the job. And if we reward persons or say thank you, sometimes it's a simple payment. I know at my job, where I work at Old Dominion Job Corps, I do my best to make sure the staff that are there, and though those who are under me know that I appreciate the work they do, I know I can't pay them, always pay them more, but I can let them know that, hey, payment comes through the success of our students that we, that we have.
In your view, so, right, there's a question, I guess, of the degree to which we really demonstrate to staff, this is across the city, right, or in any job, as you say?
Correct.
How well does LCS do that currently, in your view?
I, listen, I believe they're doing the best that they can do. I'm not going to, until I know all the facts, I'm not going to judge the previous board or the boards or anything like that. I don't know all the information, so I would not be able to give you.
Okay.
A great answer.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Wilder?
Yes, good. Thank you for coming. Thank you for volunteering your service for the school board. Really appreciate that. Could you articulate your understanding of the role of a school board member? And also, with so much information out there in reference to the school system, whether it's declining school system or the poverty rate or whatever the case may be, as a school board member, how would you address that? How would you change that message? So do you understand your role as a school board member, and how would you change the messages out there about the school system? Okay. I know that we are appointed, and there are nine members on the school board. I know that their job is to hire a superintendent and to make sure the policies and the facilities of the schools are in proper operating status. In order to change, I feel like the school board maybe needs to be more engaging in the community. I know there are advisory boards and things of that nature, but I also understand that it would be great to see school board members at different activities going out throughout the city. I know all of us can't be everywhere at the same place at the same time. I do understand that. But I think engaging the community more, maybe even showing up in the schools and encouraging the students and things of that nature. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I want Lynchburg City Schools to be the number one choice for parents and families. But unfortunately, the data says this is not the case. Math, science, history, and English needs to be prioritized, in my opinion. So I guess my question is twofold. How will you make, A, LCS more competitive to, and B, drive educational policy to where math, history, and science and English are meeting successful rates in Lynchburg?
Well, I believe the best way to do that, too, is to make sure those who are teaching those areas are effective in what they're doing and that they are, understand that they are meeting the needs of every student. Again, I stated prior that every student does not learn the same way. I've learned at, working at Job Corps that some of the students that we get at Old Dominion Job Corps are the students who did not do successfully in school. And sometimes because of that learning curve, if you will, or learning abilities, that they, they tend to fall behind. But if you can do some one-on-one, sometimes, I know classes are roughly around, what, 19 students per teacher or so, with maybe a possible student-teacher's aid or something like that. But we need to make sure that we are, making sure that student understands before they leave that classroom, making sure that they have the opportunity to all the resources that may be available, whether they, that they can access at home and not fall behind. And then two, again, encouraging and getting engaged in the school board or the teachers in the school system to work with the parents, to make sure the parents have, understand as well, and so maybe possibly having a learning center for parents or some type of workshops for parents to be able to, to be able to understand better. Because some of the parents do not truly understand how to help the students in those times.
How would you make Lynchburg City Schools more competitive?
We have to think outside the box. And I really don't know how I'm going to answer that question, but mainly thinking outside the box. What can we do differently? What, and research, what is effective and what is working in other areas and see if we can not mimic that to be better here in Lynchburg?
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. Because of your placement at the Job Corps, I think this question is quite appropriate for you. How would you assess or rate the quality of the career vocational and trade skill programs in the Lynchburg City Schools?
Councilman Nelson, I'm gonna tell you the truth. I have never really paid attention to the career training at Lynchburg City Schools. I do appreciate the fact that, I know when I went to school, we had the small engine repair and carpentry and things of that nature. However, I'm still trying to understand that. Even when my son went to school, he did a little bit of carpentry at Heritage Elementary, I mean Heritage High School, and that took him a long way because now he can build walls that I never could do. That's just not my, all my will work. So I'm just not sure how I need to answer that question. I apologize about that.
From everything I've heard and seen, that carpentry program at Heritage is outstanding.
Yes, sir.
And we've had some other successes through the decades. Do you feel that there needs to be greater emphasis on career vocational and trade skills in the schools?
I do, because not everyone is going to go to college. And we need to be able to make sure students understand that there are other opportunities besides college. And I encourage college. I want every child that can to go. But I also understand everyone cannot go. So I would encourage a career technical trade to be able to learn in order for that you may support your family as they move forward.
As I understand it, a major obstacle to enhancing that program is the significant differential between what the school system can pay to a skilled instructor versus what that instructor can earn on the business market, the commercial market. How would you deal with that if you had an option to do that? It's hard to get shop instructors.
I can imagine. One of the ways is to advertise in a way that, we want to pay them to the best of our ability at the rate that we can pay them. But it helps them to understand the significance of the impact that they make on the students' lives as well, and that they are teaching students to be able to be self-efficient in order to, to make it in our economy, in our world today. So to me, that's one of the best ways. That's what drives me and some of the people that I work with now, as we continue to see, make sure that we give the students everything they, they need in order to be successful.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Tweedy?
Thank you. What is your understanding of the conversation of the reorganization of schools and potential consolidation in our city? And what, what would your thoughts be around that? People reference a declining enrollment in our school division, and how would you anticipate the future of that conversation going?
Okay, Mayor Tweedy, Councilman Tweedy, I do need you to repeat it at the very beginning. I miss what you said at the very beginning. I do apologize.
No, that's okay. So there is conversation now about reorganization or consolidation and/or consolidation of schools, whether building a new school is necessary and should be required, or how would we look at the declining enrollment in relation to that conversation that is occurring now? And what do you see as the future of Lynchburg City Schools in that conversation of reorganization of current schools or consolidation?
Well, I believe making sure we have all the information that needs to be before us is a great, is a great part of that. And then working with the board, with the board to come over, come to a conclusion what to do next. I don't think that one person is going to figure it out. I think it's going to take many of us to come together and decide, hey, what's the best way to do that? Consolidation of schools is, to me, would be hard. Because there are certain schools in certain neighborhoods that meet the needs of those students in the neighborhood. As a child, I remember being bused from one neighborhood all the way across town, and my mother did not have a car. And if I got sick, it was hard for her to come pick me up. There were even times that in order to get me close to home, which was over by Langhorne Road, was to put me in the ambulance to take me to the hospital, and then she would walk there. So I understand that there are hard decisions that we have to make, and I'm just willing to make those decisions and, and then look, but look at every possible aspect and then make the best possible decision for a great conclusion for, for the success of our students.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Hoggson?
Your resume, you have lots of dealings with, and lots of job opportunities that you've had about helping people kind of more one-on-one to excel, right? With the mentoring service, with the counseling, lots of those are one-on-one.
Yes, sir.
Really inspiring, which is totally needed and very, probably the best way to do it, quite frankly, is one-on-one, right? Rather than a massive group. Being on the school board, you're then now would be one of nine people who's not one-on-one necessarily, but trying to figure out how we can get 7,300, 7,400 students to excel. How would you see making that transition from more of a one-on-one to more of moving the 7,380-some kids to excel?
Well, even though my jobs have been somewhat, mostly one-on-one, I have had a lot of group interactions as well. I believe group interactions are great because you're able to see various aspects that you probably would not have thought about on your own. To make that move, I don't think is a hard move for myself because I have worked in bigger groups and I've worked with nonprofit boards and things of that nature, which allowed me of a better experience and understanding of just a one-on-one setting.
And how in that, not just necessarily helping them, the students, but how would you interact with the nine school board members, which some of them, you know, kind of listen what the bureaucrats say, some of them maybe are going to listen to what parents say, some of them may have a totally different perspective. You know, it's to get to the best is the hard thing. Sometimes we hear one person saying, here's what we got to do because they're the experts, and lots of times people nod in agreement and say, well, they're the expert. How would you ascertain somebody's level of expertise and say, well, my gut tells me something different? Can you, can you dissect that or, you know, separate, you know, a push by one group versus your representation of the 7,300 students on another?
The best thing I can give you, Councilman Heggson, is that I'm a team player. However, I've been on some teams that we don't agree, and it's okay not to agree. I'm going to work my hardest to support the students of Lynchburg City to make sure that they are, get the very best education that they possibly can have. If I feel like that someone does not agree, it's okay. We can agree to disagree. But I'm still going to stay in firm with what I believe needs to be done. And I'm going to follow the facts. I'm listening to the, to the various, the different outcomes, and then make my best possible decision and move from there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Could you tell us a little bit about what experience you have in budgeting and finance?
Yes, ma'am. Of course, I have not had the experience of multimillion-dollar budgets, but I have worked with nonprofit boards and worked with budgets that, church budgets as well, trying to take a little bit of money and make a lot out of it. So I understand the concept of some things you cannot do and then trying to figure out other resources to make those things happen. So in that aspect, I believe I'm able to, to dissect what, be able to work well with a little bit of money and then try to figure out other avenues of how we can still accomplish the same goals with a little bit of money. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Mayor?
Actually, we could come back to me. I just want to give my question a little bit more thought, if that's all right.
Okay. Dr. Wilder?
Okay. Yes, most of my questions have been answered, but I'll answer another one. What is your knowledge of educational policy? I want to make sure I'm answering that correctly. So can you repeat that question? And I was making sure. What is your knowledge of educational policy? Educational policy, as far as the governance of the school? Yes. Okay. Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you. I understand that the school board, excuse me, yes, the school board hires the superintendent, and the superintendent carries out the work of the school board. However, they work together to meet the needs of the students and community, that the school board helps makes the policy of the school. They also deal with the disciplinary actions of the students and things of that nature. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Can you share a decision, you obviously have deep familiarity with LCS as a graduate of LCS, a parent and a grandparent of people, you know, of students in LCS. Can you share a decision in which you disagreed with a decision that either the school administration or the school board made and, and why? And I know I'm putting you on the spot, so.
I guess I don't have a particular event, but I do understand, and I do understand that I don't always agree with the way sometimes the school board handles some disciplinary actions. I believe that we could do an alternative means. I don't know how I can, trying to figure out how I'm saying what I'm saying there, Vice Mayor. I've been in situations. I've been in, in situations where I know that a particular school did not want to take a student because of behavior issues. And when I worked for an alternative program, that partnered with the Lynchburg City Schools, they really wanted me to kick that student out. And I sat down before the school board and fought against having that student kicked out and then alternative means and even having that student come later than the other students in order to make sure that student was still successful and graduated.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Faraldi?
About two years ago, the General Assembly in Richmond authorized localities and municipality, excuse me, and school divisions to entertain collective bargaining agreements, otherwise known as unions, with their employees for the city. Should we decide to do it, it would be with police, fire, trash pickup, water resources, city hall, and so on. In the case of the school division, it would be for Lynchburg City Schools. And they were carved out specifically because they are technically a separate governing body of a locality for the school division. If appointed to the school board, would you entertain, excuse me, would you support or oppose collective bargaining agreement with Lynchburg City employees?
If I'm correct, Councilman, that school board that right now does not have collective bargaining in their policy, and I will continue to support that at this time.
At this time or continue to support it?
I will continue to support it, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well, we can still, we still have some time. Councilmember Nelson, do you have another question?
Have you had an opportunity to review or see the facility study that was prepared by Dominion Seven at the request of the school board? And it just came out a couple of weeks ago.
I, I looked it over. I'm not gonna say I'm a-
Okay.
I fully understand all of it, yes, sir.
In the context of your comments a few minutes ago concerning your, the negative experiences of busing and having families afar, distance away from their, the school where their children attend, and, and those, those are real, real hardships. In light of the fact that that Dominion Seven report basically says that Lynchburg City Schools have too many elementary schools, we have eleven. And it was their recommendation, which is optional for the school board of the city to follow, that some of the schools that we currently have be consolidated, closed, or added on to and close others. If that be the case, how could you assess the propriety and suitability of that in the context of what you said a few minutes ago that you opposed busing when that may translate into busing farther distances and more students? If you can.
Yeah. Councilman, I still would, still make the best decision for the students and the school Yes, it was hard for my mother. But also, again, sometimes you have to make the hard decisions even if you don't want to. I would like, yes, personally, I would like, but sometimes I don't get what I like. And again, I would try my best to make the best possible decisions.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Twitty?
Would you have a problem challenging your colleagues and school board members on budgetary issues that you think if it's further investigative questioning or further questioning of administration beyond just the regular meetings and that sort of thing, would you have an issue? Would you raise red flags in the sense of if you thought there was some concerning things with budget? And how, how much greater, how much further would you go with the questioning and delving into research of information?
Well, I, yes, ma'am, I would continue to question to, I felt comfortable or felt like that we are making the best possible decision. I don't mind disagreeing with anybody. I feel like that's all it is, is a disagreement doesn't mean that we cannot get along, we cannot work together for the best possible outcome. And that's my goal, is to, for the best possible outcome for our students. I'm not, if I can say this, I'm not just a yes man to, just to make things move, or make it smoother, or make it easier. I will step up and fight for what I believe is, is good for our students.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
What do you think about, you know, Governor Youngkin ran and won on, on school choice? You know, Lynchburg, we have about forty percent of, of the students that are eligible for the public schools choose to go elsewhere. Lots of people are, you know, they, they pay taxes for the public school, but they still gotta pay to send their kids elsewhere. Typically, when you look at either charter schools or some kind of school choice, it was designed to help those that don't have the means to go to other schools, or, you know, to send their kids elsewhere or private school to where we have choice in education. Do you think, what do you think about school choice or charter schools in Lynchburg?
I believe that we need to engage our school systems and, and be able to engage our community and encourage our students to be in the school systems that we have. I'm not against charter schools. That's some people's choice, and they have that choice. So, but I will always encourage persons to come to the school system instead of doing, going elsewhere. That's just my choice.
So when people that are doing that elsewhere, you know, so, and we gotta kind of wrestle with this, what their parents are going through. I mean, the parents have got to not only pay taxes and have a free education, but they gotta pay elsewhere. That means lots of money out of their pocket. It also means not just the busing system that drops the kids off in front of the house and picks them up or has after-school activities, but now they gotta transport their children elsewhere, which is a real tough decision for parents. And parents are making that decision in droves. Forty percent roughly in Lynchburg say, keep the free thing. We're gonna do it elsewhere. Is, does that send any kind of red flag? Or is that just, well, if you're not gonna take it, then so be it?
No, sir, that is a concern. And we, and I say we as a board, we have to look at that and see how we can better encourage those persons to, to again, to come back to, to the school system.
Why do you think so many people have left to begin with?
Honestly, sir, I'm not sure. And that's dishonest. Everybody has that decision, not really having a head, those conversations or have done that research to know.
You know, it's interesting, when you look nationally, there's one to two million kids that have left the public school system just in the last year. Because parents, you know, your parent and grandparent and, and whatnot, they care about the education of their children. And to me, it's pretty eye-opening when you see this massive movement of, of folks leaving without saying why. I mean, you know, lots of times when things happen, we need to ask why.
Correct.
So what do you think the why is?
Again, Councilman, I'm not sure of everybody's why.
Thank you.
So that'd be ill-advised of me to answer that. Again, I hope, my hope would be that we can figure out the why and then encourage persons to return back to the school system, that we can work together and make it better for all of our students.
Thank you. Do you have any?
I do not, but thank you.
Dr. Wilder?
Ma'am, thank you.
So we have a couple of minutes left. Would you, do you have any questions you would like to ask us?
No, ma'am, not at this time.
Thank you. All right, that's, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all's time.
Y'all deserve.
Y'all have a great day.
You have a great weekend? Enjoy that ninety-degree heat out there.
Holy heat.